Been a little after seven, we had to wait for one more member to show up. All this meeting to order. And Joe, do you have anything?
So on September 8th, there was the strategic planning retreat. It was really well attended, over 300 people registered for the event. Our department had a table there. There were two items that we had information on. One was on commercial recreation opportunities and potentially being able to expand areas where that could potentially be allowed in town. And then otherwise, it was also the MBTA communities, the mandate coming from the state regarding multifamily housing. So as a part of that, we did develop some surveys. They are available on the town website right on the front page. You'll notice commercial recreation opportunity survey, new multifamily zoning requirement survey right on the front page of the website. We also have hard copies available in our department if anybody did want to take the survey and tell us what you think about each of these items.
Okay. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is, Joe was just telling me that there is nothing for the October meeting, so you might get a month off. But come November, one of the items that we're going to take up on the general business is the timeliness of material being submitted to us. And so we're going to develop some criteria and language for that, so that when this stuff comes in, it's not coming in at the end though, no one has a chance to read it. And so that's one of the items that we'll be talking about at that point. So anybody else have anything? Okay, so we have a continued item from the last meeting. Summer Village, you're up.
Could I appoint Dave Scott?
Possibly. He's supposed to be here, so we-
It's not Dave, I thought I heard him come in.
That was Jay. Say hi, Jay.
Oh, you guys are not guys.
Yeah. So at the last meeting, we sent you guys home with some homework. We got all the letters and things that you had sent in. And that was a good start. So in the meantime, I have spoken to the builder, kind of got the skinny on why some have, why some units have lofts and why some do not. And I think I'll start with that. The lofted units have a structural ridge beam, okay? So there were no collar ties or rafter ties that ran across, so that was pretty simple. The other units do not have a structural ridge beam, and so there are collar ties and rafter ties. One has to be in the top third, one has to be in the bottom third. You can't take them out. That's the plain and simple of it, okay? If you want to, you can take the ridge beam out, put in a structural ridge beam, and then you can remove the collar ties and rafter ties. So that's what I learned about why some do and some didn't. There was actually two different architects. The first group was designed by one architect, and the other units were designed by somebody else, allowing for those lofts to be put in. So it's pretty evident to me and clear to me that one of the questions that was asked is about the loft and the 800 square feet. So if someone wanted to add a loft, it would appear that it doesn't count into the 800 square feet. So that's pretty straightforward. Now, if people want to, this is my supposing of this, that if people come to the town to put a loft in a non-lofted unit, there's going to be a series of criteria that have to be met. First of all, it has to be approved by you guys.
Right.
Okay? Then, as part of the building permit, there has to be a copy of 7.8 of the master deed in your wording about the loft cannot be used for living space, signed by the applicant and included with the building permit application. Also, there has to be a copy of Section 8, which states that there's two bedrooms maximum, signed by the applicant. Once again, there has to be ZBA approval to do this. We may approve, we may not approve, okay? This is, I'm talking lofts, not bump outs, not anything else. This is just lofts. One of the other orders of conditions that will apply to this is that the railing that divides the loft off has to be four feet high. The opening in the railing cannot exceed 32 inches. The lofts cannot have a finished floor. They can't have any utilities, no cable, no electricity, no heat, no AC. An egress window has to be put in of correct size to meet code. There has to be a fire escape ladder up there. There has to be a fire extinguisher up there. Has to be smoke and CO2 tied into the main system of the house up there. And all lofts are going to be subject to an annual inspection by the Town of Westford. And any violations that are found, there's going to be a 30-day window for people to correct that violation. And then after 30 days, it's going to be a hundred dollar a day fine. And then, as a result of all the inspections, there's 160, 170, how many units there are, the town is going to figure out a cost to the association to do that. Because the town's not going to foot the bill on that one. So are there any questions from you guys about any of this?
Well, there's a couple.
Okay.
So if someone met all this, you're saying they still have to come before you?
That's correct.
Okay. The second issue is, again, in just total transparency and collaboration, these cottages have been up for 13 years, some long time. And so this whole idea of inspecting them and charging a fee, I guess, you know, I can't speak for the entire board, but I guess we'd want to think about that, look at that, talk to our attorney about that as well. You know, the difficult part that I, that I hear from owners is, you know, who has the right to enter my cottage and doesn't have the right to enter my cottage? Does the town have a legal right? Does the town not have a legal right? And I don't know the answer to that. So just like last week, last meeting, when you asked to speak to town council, I guess, you know, hearing this, I'd want to talk to our council as well.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Does your association have the right to go in and inspect units?
So twice a year-
Not the town, you're some representative of your group.
So we, under our rules, we decommission the cottages in the fall, and then we reset them up again in the spring. So we have staff and vendors in there every fall and every spring.
And what do they do? What's their charter? What do they look at?
Essentially plumbing, is most of it.
Plumbing?
They make, they have to winterize the cottage.
Okay.
And then de-winterize it in the spring.
So that there were double beds up in the loft, that wouldn't affect, that wouldn't impact anybody's inspection?
If someone was storing, some people may store beds up there, that doesn't mean they're being used. And I guess-
No, 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 no. No, that, no, that doesn't pass the smell test. You wouldn't store a bed up there. Why would you store a bed up there and not use it?
Right.
If it's up there as a bed, it's being used as a bed. If it's downstairs as a bed, it's being used as a bed. You might store your summer furniture up there, you might put your kids' bikes up there. You're not going to store a bed up there. What are you going to, take it down and use it downstairs and put it up there in the winter? No, if it's a bed downstairs, you're going to leave it there. It's an, if it's up there as a bed, it's an extra bed, it's being used as a bed.
Well, that's where frankly, I don't know that I can agree with you on that. Because for 13 years, they've been, there's been beds stored up there. And there have been, not necessarily every cottage has had someone spend the night. So for you to now come back arbitrarily and say, "We're going to tell you what you can store up there and not store up there," again, I'm not being argumentative, but I, we got, I have to talk to the board, I have to talk to the community, and have to talk to our own council about that. You know, because you approved all of those back when the developer did his work. And the developer sold them, and as we said last time, finished carpets, all that kind of stuff. Even since then, the building inspector has come back to us with another issue, because over 100 cottages he built with a 4x6 attached shed. And the building inspectors come back and said, "Well, I can't approve sheds now, because 4x6 is 24 square feet. If there's an 800 square foot cottage, I can't approve a shed." And yet, he's approved sheds in the past. So he's asked us, as part of this whole clarification, to deal with the bump outs, to deal with the half baths, and to deal with the sheds, so we can get that off the table, that hopefully none of those enter into the 800 square foot. We'd like to resolve all those issues for him, so it's easy for him. The 4x6 sheds do not require a town permit because of the size and et cetera. But he's now not, he's decided not to approve any, because he's, he's going back to this ruling of not more than 800 square feet. So in one of the letters, we added that for your consideration, to say, "Can we resolve the bump outs? Can we resolve the baths? Can we resolve that?" So that makes his life easier. But as far as retroactively going back and doing something different with the lofts, you know, obviously you folks can do whatever you want to do, I'm just saying I'd have to go back and talk to the board, the community, and our, and our council on retroactive, retroactivity on the lofts.
Is there any process where you amend your condo docs?
There is a process that requires, in some cases, 75% of the owners to agree. In some cases, depending on what it is we're trying to change, it could be 100%. Like if we're going to try to buy something, it's 100%, but if we want to change some of the rules, it's, it's between 67 and 75, depending on the situation.
So enforcement of something, is that within your purview? Take away the loft issue, something else that someone did that was not permitted per the condo docs. Said they put in a freestanding shed, three or four people put in a freestanding shed. How would that be handled by the association?
Or make it simple, so we have a cottage rule that speed limit is 10 miles per hour, if we caught you going 20 miles an hour with a radar gun, you can be fined for that.
Okay, so could you amend the docs so that if, there's a, there's a fine for using the loft?
So if we can't, the owners would have to. And I have to get 67% or 75% of the owners to agree to a change to that effect. And it's, it's, you know, we, for instance, our, our docs used to say that you could not have more than a $10,000 co-insurance. And all the insurance companies have raised that today to 25 and higher. It took us months to get the owners to agree to a change to go from a $10,000 to a $25,000 copay. It's just not that easy to get owners' attention to sign documents for a change. And something like that, where we said to them, "We have no choice, we're not going to get insurance next year unless we have a $25,000 deductible." And it still took us months in order to get that approved.
You got all winter.
Right? Again, people aren't there all winter, so it's, it's easier in season, you can knock on doors, you can talk to folks, it's a little bit harder when people are all over the country trying to reach them.
So with all that I've said, it still doesn't mean you'd get a building permit?
That's correct. No, I understand that part.
Okay, so I'm just throwing out a whole bunch of things that we would like to see there, but it's still up to the guy that swings the big stick. And-
Can I ask a clarification on the inspection? So existing, I understand what you're saying about, you know, finished lofts, air conditioning, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Existing lofts that are finished and have air conditioning, are those grandfathered in?
Yeah, because they're there.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I make sure.
I, I kind of look at, I mean, adding to this, and I made a discussion last, last meeting about the, you know, the fire safety and the ladders and going, and I look at that picture of that window, and I'd like to see a drill where someone went out down a fire ladder. It's an awful small window, looking, I know it's probably code, but considering that, you know, say an adolescent had to get out that window, I don't know what the size, it looks pretty, it's pretty small, and throw a ladder and get down there, that seems like a pretty big challenge to me, for someone to be adroit enough to do that, or two or three kids in a fire. And again, I'm not, I think, you know, fire is probably not the, to my mind, fire's not the main concern in these cottages, because they're small enough. If there's a kitchen fire, you can probably go down and out the front door pretty, I mean, 30 seconds. Nonetheless, safety with windows and ladders is something we talked about and talked about imposing.
Right.
So, you know, I don't know about existing units, but I would think that in any subsequent lofts that they were to be approved, I think a larger window would be in order. And I also think perhaps through the fire department, there ought to be some spec on a ladder. Someone shouldn't probably get away with going on Amazon and buying the cheapest safety ladder and saying, "We got it." There should be some spec on a ladder that's strong code, whatever, rather than a, you know, $30. I don't know how that would work, but I think that if ladders and safety equipment are to be, to be incorporated into the decision, I think specificity on what that should be should be included.
So I think there are two issues. There's the issue of new lofts, and I think we said at our last meeting with you, you know, we are open to, you know, a bigger window, we're open to the ladder, the safety, you know, all of that kind of stuff. We hadn't talked about whether it could have air conditioning or not have air conditioning, et cetera. But, but I mean, we were on the same page, I think, there. So I don't have a, a lot of heartburn when it comes to that going forward. I think we can work our way through that.
I do too.
Where I'm, where I'm saying I have concern, and I just can't speak on behalf of the entire community at this point, that the 186 lofts that have been in existence for 10, 12, 13 years, to now retroactively change rules for them could create an issue. And I just, I can't commit to you tonight, as just one board member and one member of the community, that, that we could support that, that's all. I'm just trying to be transparent to you on that. Not, not on new requests going forward, but on the 186 of the developer installed. For those rules to change now could be difficult.
What about the units that are for sale or rent? I noticed the letter that you re-received from the board trustees, that they sent out an email to realtors or any property that was listed on for sale, that those lofts cannot be used as a living space. And you clearly go to Realtor.com, and you look at those spaces, they advertise it as a bedroom.
Well, that letter-
You know that, right? I mean, you do know that, right?
Retroactively, yes. I haven't seen that since the letter was sent out to the real estate agents. The last that I checked, there was only, I think, one unsold cottage in Summer Village at this point. In the past, we've had five, 10, 12 at a time for sale, and yes, the real estate agents did advertise that, or they had pictures, et cetera. That's why we went to the trouble of writing every agent that is either listed or sold a property, to make sure that they know they can't do that going forward, and they need to disclose it to any prospective buyer. But we also put a notice on our website, you know, if you were coming in to look at a cottage for sale, that there's, there's a notice there as well to bring your attention to it. So what we tried to do is be responsive to your criticism at the last meeting, and reach out, we reached out to the community to reinforce the deed restriction, we reached out to the real estate agents, we reached out to the rental agents, we reached out to everybody that we thought should be made aware, as you suggested at the last meeting, and then sent you copies of that, so you'd know that we in fact did our homework as you asked us to do.
Scott, can I go back to Jim's comment? I thought we were going to ask the building inspector to give us what his criteria was if we chose to accept lofts at Summer Village. Did we get that? Do we have that?
I think he definitely said he was going to enforce the large window.
No, 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 but I thought he was going to get-
Different type of ladder.
Well, what I'm looking for, maybe he's not here. I was looking for the cri, the criteria. Did he specify the window size? Or we, we don't know.
I don't think yet he has. I don't think he has yet.
Okay, I thought we were going to have that for this evening.
I think we should, I might, to my mind, I think that should be agreed upon.
But I mean, I'd rather than get into the minutia of that, it seems to me we ought, at least speaking for myself, we ought to ask the building inspector to tell us what would be, what is the criteria for acceptance, and then support that.
The one issue on that point that we talked about the last meeting, the building inspector talked about a different, so today we have the ladder that goes up into the lofts.
Yeah.
And if it were livable space, he could require a different set of stairs.
Yes.
Since it's not livable space, and can never be livable space, then the ladder that we have today is the appropriate ladder, under the terms and conditions that we've had. So there was some discussion about the ladder piece and whether that would change, and that would depend, but the window size was one thing that we said to him, "You define the size of the window, and we can all live with that."
Yeah, but it was the whole criteria.
Well, we can get, we'll get that from them.
Okay, great. Because it seems to me that's, should be, I'm sorry, Boyd, is what, if we chose to approve lofts, this is the criteria that they must adhere to?
Yeah, agree.
And he would have that spelled out when he's approving the plan, is that right?
Well, no, no, but-
I would think so.
But we, I think we should get that spec out upfront.
So I guess what you're saying, Jay, is if we approve future loft construction, then window size should be-
That should be, exactly, exactly.
I think he did touch base on it, and he mentioned a certain size, and I thought there was one type of unit that wouldn't support that size window.
Yeah, that's correct.
So therefore, they could never get a loft.
It's 20 by 24, is what the window spec says.
That's, that's one half of a window that opens. There has to be a clear opening, 20 by 24, for someone to get out. So that means that window is really 20 by 48 at a minimum size.
5.7.
5.7 square feet, correct. So I think, Joe, if you could send the commissioner a note as to what we're looking for, for our November meeting, it appears, that would be helpful.
It sounds like it would be good to have all the conditions you listed out-
Yep.
Sent over to the applicant. The applicant would like to touch base with their council.
Yep.
Run through those, see if there's any points of contention, or any other suggestions that you can offer. We could also have town council view that as well.
Yes.
And get the building commissioner's input.
Yep.
Have it all in an updated decision letter.
Yeah. Yeah. The board have any other questions, comments?
I mean, we, I mean, I don't think it's possible, but is there any, any possibility of a permanent fire escape outside the window to be part of any future construction of lofts, rather than that ladder?
I guess certainly we could, we could, the applicant could, to that with their, with their designer. Part of the documents today say that you can't change the exterior look. So there'd be a question whether, does that, that go against the condo docs or not?
Yeah, probably.
But it's certainly something that we could, you know, we could explore, we could talk about, we'd talk with you. As I say, I think, you know, there's the two issues. There's the going forward issues, and then there's the 13-year-old issues. And that's, those are two separate issues. But to make it clear, you have said tonight, I think, if I heard it correctly, that the, the 800 feet is exclusive of the loft. The loft's not part of the 800 square feet, which was one of the questions that we had.
That's what your documents say.
Correct, okay. So we're on the same page there, and now it's a matter of, from the safety standpoint going forward, and what you would require and not require. May I ask, though, that if, if you were to lay out certain criteria, like it couldn't have a finished floor, couldn't have air conditioning, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, why would the person have to come before you and have a hearing? Why couldn't the building inspector, under, with your, with your rules as guidance, the building inspector simply approve it with the applicant? Why do they have to come back here to you and take up more of your time?
So this is how it works. Applicant A comes to the building inspector with a plan. He can either approve or deny, or he can send it to us. If he denies it, he obviously gives you the reasons and says, "You're going to go see the zoning board of appeals, because it doesn't meet this, doesn't meet that." And that's basically what happens then. If we approve and disapprove, then it goes back to him, and he can issue the permit based on his findings.
So the reason why I ask that-
What if he approves it?
If he approves it, then they can build it.
And we don't see it. We don't see it.
Okay. So they don't need to come back to you if he approves it?
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
So the only thing I struggle with is, the building inspector has been hesitant as he reads documents to say, "I'm not sure I understand that, I need to go back to ZBA."
Right.
And so I would just like to suggest that if we could make it as clear as possible, so that he doesn't have to keep coming back here and waste your time, and make it a law for everybody, from that sense.
Well, that, that's, yes, that's the goal of this whole thing.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure on-
You know, a consistent, you know, outlook for everyone. So yes, that's part of the goal, so we can give him more tools-
Right.
-to make these decisions.
So the goal would be to lay it out with, with enough specificity that he could approve it, and they don't have to come back here and take up your time? That would be the ultimate goal, when everything's said and done? Okay. I didn't hear that earlier, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
In, in, in general, it was 296 units?
286, I think, 276.
276.
276, and you said 187 have loft.
I think it's 180-something have loft.
Okay, so we're down-
86.
Okay, so we're down roughly 100 that don't have loft.
Right.
Then you said there's some design units, design units that cannot accommodate a loft, right?
Well-
There's one design.
There's one model.
I was trying to figure out how many potential loft units we have on the table here.
So your comment today about the structure?
Mm-hmm.
We've never heard that before. And so I don't, you know, they only built so many models.
Right.
And I don't know if, you know, when you went to design your model with the developer, and you had all the options, if you decided not to do a loft, I didn't, I wasn't aware that he built it differently than if you decided to do the loft.
No, that's, that's not what happened. So everything with a loft, everything, everything pre- loft units is the ones that have, don't have structure to the ridge pole. The lofted units, the after ones do.
Well, he started selling lofts early into the process. I don't, I can't tell you exactly, was it year one, year two, year three, year four? But obviously, with 186, they were quite a few. And they only had, let's say, five models. So that's why I was confused, that if you had the five models and they didn't change, then that would have meant that if you didn't opt for the loft, I built it differently than if you did. So maybe one of the things we can do, go back and look at which ones don't have lofts and when they were built, and, and potentially have a conversation with the developer to find out whether those are, as you described, impossible to build without a lot of structural differences, or whether they're able to be, to be built. I just don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah.
And the developer has never shared that with us in the past.
No, do we know probably how many were new-built with lofts, and how many were, had loft added on?
There have been very few lofts added on.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. It's only, it's a handful, it's less than five.
It's maybe, I was going to say two or three.
Okay, that's good, that's, that's my, that's where I'm going with it.
Over the entire 15 years.
Right.
So out of 180, whatever you said that have loft, 187, then 180 were the new-built ones with the structural beam.
That's correct.
There's only a few that have this column thing.
And the few that, the few lofts that were built subsequent were approved by the previous building inspector.
Okay, okay.
So it wasn't like someone did something.
We're talking about a small number of those-
That's correct.
-retrofitted lofts.
That's correct.
Okay, that's good to know.
So your phrase was, is important, the previous building inspector.
Right.
There's been three inspectors in that project.
Right.
And one major code change, too, during that time period. So all those factored in.
Right. And again, I've heard that, that the current building inspector did approve one of them. I don't have the facts in front of me. But I was told by an owner that he did approve one of them under his tenure, and then didn't approve this one that's caused the interview tonight. So again, the part that gets frustrating as an owner is, you know, some lofts got approved, some lofts didn't. Some sheds got approved, some lo, some sheds didn't. And it's been difficult dealing with the building department as the rules kind of changed under the latest tenure. And again, we understand his concern that, here's what the language says, and I can't interpret that language differently. But in some cases, he did approve things, and then he didn't. Now, it could just be from a experience, "I wasn't aware of this when I approved it, now I'm aware of it, so now I'm doing something different." So I'm not trying to be critical of him at all. I'm just trying to say that as, as a, as an owner, it's difficult when, when your neighbor gets something and you don't, and, and you, you just wonder what, what happened, what, what would have happened.
Oh, sure, that's fair, that's-
So, and you can imagine, that's what we get at the board when-
Sure, you get people complaining that-
Yeah.
That there's disparate treatment.
Right, so we, we're just trying to make sure it's, it's fair and consistent across for everybody. And it's, and it's clear enough that the building inspector says, "I understand it clearly now, and I don't have to keep running back to you for additional clarification." Because that's a waste of our time and your time. I'd rather make sure when this is all said and done, he certifies that he understands what the rules are at that point, and what he can approve and can't approve. Because from our standpoint, we won't approve anything, as a board, that we don't think you're going to approve. Because we're not going to waste your time or our time. So once we clearly know, and, and we've used in the past the criteria for sheds, or the criteria for, for lofts, in order to approve it and send them here to the town in that particular case.
It might be a prudent plan going forward if you folks, you know, when you're looking at people adding lofts, to get a design that the building inspector approves, and it's A+. And then anybody else looking for a loft, say, "Here's the, as built. Don't go out and find another contractor, come up with another scheme. This is what the building inspector will approve, because he approved it over there, and then the next, if you do the same exact thing, then it's like eating carbon paper, he's going to approve that too."
So the current applicant, who's here tonight, they're using the exact same plan, same architect, same everything that was, that was approved previously.
Okay.
So that's one of the-
That's one of the hangups here.
Right, and that's what their frustration is, that-
Right.
-they chose your method in order to shortcut the process, make it all easy for everyone.
The hangup probably wasn't the design of the loft, Mark, it was probably the 800 square feet. Is it living space or isn't it? It might not be the design was faulty.
You're right.
The building inspector probably has no problem with that design, but here we are with a jump ball on, is it part of living space or not?
Yep.
So that design may be fine, I would think.
Just for clarification, like-
Before you say, can you go up to the microphone, please, and give us your name?
Sure, I'm Jennifer Card. So just to, like, for complete clarification, Nine Ravine Way, we use the same contractor. we use the same contractor, same architectural plans, same style unit, aftermarket loft. So all structurally the same. It's Henry's signature. And I submitted that kind of when he first declined our permit. It's Henry's signature on the permit.
Mm-hmm.
And then Three Ravine Way, which is also an aftermarket loft, which was put in last summer, last July of 2021, is also signed off on by Henry.
Mm-hmm.
So there's been two in his tenure, one of which is ident- and it's the same contractor for both. It's Heritage Construction, Dave Lantain. He's been amazing and he works with Henry. So this is why this felt so disparate and so intentional against my husband and I when we were trying to go through the right process and do the right things. So just, that's, I just wanted to make that point of clarification. We, we tried to do the right thing here.
I believe that Nine Ravine Way was put in three, maybe four years ago. So I don't know how many rules have changed since then.
One building inspector changed.
No, Henry signed it.
But his signature's on the final approval of that loft. And we're using the same plan, same builder, same con- like-
Henry might have signed off on the final, but who issued it? It might have been the-
So Henry issued it. But what I think happened is that when they went for final inspection, there was a bed upstairs and he got upset. And that's like, we're dealing with the repercussions of this. However, there has, he did approve another loft in between the two of them. So I, I don't, I don't really know the reasoning or rationale. At first it was the eight hundred square feet. Then we resubmitted the plan for seven hundred and ninety-eight square feet. He shot it down again and was like, I'm just not doing it. And we said, okay, well, why? Help us understand. We wanna work with you. We'll figure out the square footage. It's, we truly need the, the storage space. And so he said, it's my ruling. It's how I feel. I know what goes on in that community. I'm not approving any more of these. If you don't like it, take it to ZBA. In which, that is when we solicited Larry to say, like, can you help us? We just don't understand. We feel like this is discriminatory. We feel like this is intentional. Um, we don't understand the difference between the two. We can't get him to sit and have a conversation with us. Dave reached out to him as well, the contractor, to say, just help us understand. He did with the previous one in summer of 2021, regulate the new size window. So we ordered that size window and, and the same loft ladder has, that had been put in the two previous ones that he approved to make sure that we were following all the rules. And then didn't get an explanation other than square footage. And when it was shut down and we, we reduced the square footage, he said, I just don't like what goes on over there and I'm not approving anymore. And that was the rationale for how we got here today. So just for that quick context, it feels really, really discriminatory and really intentional. Um, and I just, you know, from, from here, from being two folks that have been planning our loft expansion since last December, it's really, really hard to sit in this room and hear, hear the kind of continued, you know, historical. We've only been owners since 2019. I don't know what happened previous to that. But to sit in this room as owners who worked really hard to buy in that community, who need a little bit of extra space for our belongings, it feels really hard to, to listen to this. So if I'm being quite honest.
And as far as the beds in the lofts, right now, we, we have a mattress leaning up against the wall, you know, in the kids' bedroom. So when they, you know, when the kids wanna sleep over or there's something going on. So like, you know, it's not really adequate to lean a mattress up at the kids' bedroom for a sleepover. So if I had a loft, I would just hoist that mattress up into the loft.
Yeah, it's like a foam.
And, and have it not be in my way.
Right.
And, and as far as like, being able to finish that loft, like, I'm sure we all know, we all have attics at home, like the dust you get when you don't finish off a space, like dust comes in. I don't know how, how it does, but, but it does. You, you need a floor, you need walls, you need molding, you need trim. You need all those things to keep the dust out. So as, as far as like approving a loft and not being able to finish that loft, it kinda seems like a moot point.
Yeah. It's, it's fine. We'll figure that part out. I just, we just need to get to the point where like-
Right now, that mattress doesn't fit through the attic pull-down.
So it's fine. It's, it's fine. We'll, we'll figure out the, we'll, we'll resubmit the permit based on the order of conditions that comes out from today. I would imagine that it will likely not be approved and we'll be back here having this conversation again. Or we're gonna list our place. And, and, and that's unfortunate because, you know, it's, it's really, it's, it's a disadvantage to people who wanna be in this community, who wanna be part of the town of Westford, like to, to, to feel the way that we feel right now. So just for what that's worth.
So Jen, just to clarify one thing, I don't think they're gonna give us a ruling tonight.
There will be no ruling tonight.
There'll be no ruling tonight. I think that they've said is they will not meet in October. So probably in November, we'll come back and, and staff and everybody will work together to try to come up with something. Uh, we had seen a draft letter from the staff to you. Um, and so we thought we were gonna get through tonight and get a, get a final decision. Obviously, you had a different viewpoint than the staff. So I just wanted to make it clear to them that it, it didn't sound like you were gonna make a decision tonight.
You're a ways off.
Okay.
Now, most, when these construction, when this construction, like lofts, if someone's gonna do a loft, they do it during the season when it's closed?
No, they can do it during the off-season. We let them do it during the off-season.
So they'd be doing it in, in the winter.
In their case, if they got appro- if you had decided tonight things were okay.
Yeah.
They would then put their application in, wait the thirty-day appeal period and on day thirty-one, they'd be able to start their construction.
Okay.
We had been closed by then, but we had told them that, like others, they could do it.
Well, it makes, make more sense to do when it's not occupied.
It's easier when this, it's easier when, when we're closed. There's just less, less work.
Yeah.
Can you clarify why we're being punished on being able to do something that other people have done?
We can't, we can't clarify anything because-
Their interiors?
The building inspector doesn't work for us. Okay, um, so-
It seems like the problem is, is whether or not there's beds or living space in that loft. Whereas I, I don't know whether people are doing in their cottages.
That has nothing to do with us.
That has nothing to do with my intent with my loft. Just as you, you couldn't go, you know, three houses down and go in their house and depict what they do with their interior home. So I don't know why that's a concern with this loft.
I think it's been a concern from, for some time. You know, the elephant in the room is the living space loft being used as a living space. So I don't know whether that was a hang-up for the building inspector, this one or a prior one. Um, and I did hear at one point when I was talking to the fire inspector several years back on a sale of another house that he had just come from there, and said, every inspection, every time I do a sale with the, with the, chucking the fire, the fire alarms, the lofts are being used as, as, uh, living space. That was just a wry comment when I was selling, selling another piece of property.
Sure.
Um, an observation he, he made, cause he knew I was on this board. That was several years ago. So I think that perhaps, you know, you're, you're caught in this living, the loft being used as living space.
What the issue is, is whether or not lofts are allowed.
Yep.
Primarily.
Yep.
And the use of that loft.
Right. The use of the loft seems to be the-
So I think the use of the loft shouldn't allow me to not be able to put a loft.
You're probably right. You're probably right.
And finish it with a floor, carpet, whatever it is, to have it finished so that it, you know, there's no dust.
Yeah, I don't even care, honestly.
But the other thing is it needs to be deterrent. If we, the board is concerned about the loft being used as living space. So we're trying to be creative to come up with the currents so that doesn't happen. Cause it's happening pervasively, it seems.
I understand it, but it's like, it's like, you know, when you drove here tonight at your speed, you know, you probably did. You, you might not have, but like, because maybe someone else sped, you get a speeding ticket for driving?
And that's just the way it is.
You know, it just doesn't seem fair.
You correct something, you can't go back and fix everything that was previous. When you correct it, you have to move forward with a different set of criteria in some instances. And I think that's probably what we're looking at here. That we can't, we can't probably, it sounds like there's not a lot of enforcement from the association. There's not a lot of enforcement from the building inspector that's gonna say that's, that's being used as living space. So we can't go back and those that were built new as living space, not a hell of a lot we can do about that, it sounds like, from either side here. But I think going forward, there's a concern that we don't, you know, you're, you're right. You're look, you're looking for storage space. We wanna try to put something together that's gonna be, ensure it's storage space and not possibly living space.
So is this unique to Summer Village? Because like, what happens for people who finish basements? You're not theoretically, be ceiling height, all that stuff, you're not allowed to-
What you have to understand is, Summer Village, when you bought it, that's what you got. There must be nothing else done over there. Okay? The first instance that came to us was a bump out for a bathroom. Then there was a bump out for something else, a closet and something else. In hindsight, we should have stuck to our guns and said, what you got is what you got. Cause a lot of times when these projects get approved, and, and a lot of things we improve, the intent of what we're saying and what we're approving somehow disappears and down the road, it changes. Okay? Through different inspectors, different members of the board and everything else. And it's not, that's not uncommon. However, the, the only place that won a seasonal is Summer Village and the wording to get this approved in your documents was all stated at the time when the boards approved all of this so that it would be a seasonal community, limited amount of bedrooms, no one's going to school from there, all these criteria and added into it. And now everybody wants to change it.
So the other thing that, that is difficult, but to be candid with everybody, is those changes you talked about, the developer made. The developer decided he could do bump outs. The decide, and, and so once he got approval to change his design, then some people said-
During the process of construction.
Right.
Not after the fact.
No. But then some, as he designed, as he changed his models and he changed his square footage, et cetera, then people decided, well, if he could do it, why can't I do a bump out kind of a thing? Which creates that issue. But the other issue, and I've talked to a prior salesperson for, for the developer about this issue. And they said very clearly, this is just their opinion, that the developer knew that this was for storage and that kids might be stored up there from time to time and that the town knew it. And the salesperson said the town has known it for thirteen years because every time the fire department came through, they knew it. Every time they looked at real estate papers. So, so it's hard for the town, not you folks, but it's hard for the town to say, wow, this is shocking to us. The town has known it since day one, the same as the developer, et cetera. So that's what makes it really difficult. We're all kind of guilty of some degree because we all knew that while it said storage, it was finished space. It was air-conditioned. And we knew that there were beds up there. We knew there were beds. You knew there were beds. The real estate people knew there were beds. And so that's the part that makes it difficult today. Not trying to blame anybody, but the fact is, all of us in the town, the developer and the community have some dirt in our fingers because we all knew what was happening. So that's the part that we're all trying to work our way through without pointing fingers at each other. But that's the thing that we have to try to work our way through.
That's why we should have a code of force or go there every year and inspect the units and make sure they're not happening that way.
But I don't know that, I don't know for sh- that you can bill me that cost after the fact because that wasn't part of the original order of conditions. So again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but those kinds of things-
It was a part of the order. You're not supposed to have living space. If an inspector walks in there and there's two or three beds upstairs, that's living space.
No, that's not true.
Into every house in Westford and, and inspect their homes.
The basements, right?
It's, it's not, it's not-
No, but if you know a hundred and eighty units are basically breaking the law, you have every right to walk in those units and prove that you're breaking the law.
I don't think you can come in my personal space.
If an owner signs an affidavit, I'm storing my beds up there and nobody stayed up there, who, who, who is the town to decide that they're not telling the truth? Alright? So the, the answer could be to get an affidavit, just like you're saying that, that an applicant would have to-
But see, this is where we're trying to work with you.
Right.
And we could say, no more lofts, period. Because we know everyone's abusing it over there.
Right.
That's where we're at as a board.
But you're still-
We know there's abuse going on. We're trying to be political about it and work with you guys.
Right.
And you're saying, well, they have to sign an affidavit and say they're not, if there's beds up there, people are sleeping up there. Let's be real.
No, that's not, I can guarantee, I've had beds in my loft since we bought eleven years ago and no one has ever slept up there.
So what are they up there for then?
Because we had them up there in case we wanted someone to. We've just not had anybody stay over to do that. Alright? So my, my point is I'm not-
They were there for that purpose.
Right.
They were there for that purpose.
They were there for that purpose because the developer said that that could be the case. And, and, and my, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, gentlemen. But the town of Westford is complicit. You knew, the fire department knew and others in town knew that those were being used for more than just storage.
And you are complicit because you put a mattress up there for someone to show up and sleep there.
But they haven't. Right. So have I got-
But they haven't, but that was your intent.
That was my intent, but no one's violated any law then. And so that's where we-
Yeah, yeah. Cause no one showed up there to sleep there, but you intended that.
But those are the issues we have to try to work through. We're trying to be collaborative. We're trying to work with you on that. But we also have to, as a board, have to protect the rights of our owners as well about un- illegal search and seizures. Coming into someone's cottage arbitrarily twice a year or once a year on a regular basis and then billing us for that, I don't know, I just don't know whether you can legally do that. And I'm not trying to be argumentative. That's something I'd have to talk to our council about and talk to the board. I don't know that our owners would be open to having an inspection once or twice every single year and have to pay for that inspection when no one else in the town has that. And the town was complicit from day one in knowing how those were approved and what the purpose of those were. Again, you didn't do that. I'm not blaming you folks. But there are people in town who clearly knew what these were being used for and they looked the other way. The developer looked the other way. And so now we're, we're, we're owners trying to work with you in a collaborative way.
Dave, Scott, may, may, may come in. For better or worse, I happen to be in a board at the time this was approved.
Okay.
Okay. And let's back up. And I'm, I'm going by my memory, which we all know is not always-
Yes.
clarity. Okay? One of the things we said was eight hundred square feet. And we said two hundred and seventy-six unit, units because it was a compromise as to how much building we would allow at what previously been a summer camp. And on reflection, that summer camp over the years had really, people had RVs there, people had tents there. Everything went on. So this was sort of, the intent of the town was to reset.
Right.
Which we did. And we also said you could have lofts. And it's, again, it's my recollection. Nobody ever talked about making those lofts bedrooms. We talked about, and this is my memory again, about when you had your grandkids come over or some people came out. They may, if you will, camp out there, put a sleeping bag there and sleep and everything. So, so we went along and I think everything was copacetic, so to speak. The next thing that happened is because different models accommodated a bump out, if you will, half bath on the ground floor, people wanted that. And because of the way the documents were constructed, they couldn't have it. And this board, I think, wisely said, no, that's not right. We'll amend it so you can add those half baths to those units, but you still can't exceed eight hundred square feet.
Is that what hap- what did that result in the lawsuit? Wasn't that a lawsuit?
I think, I was on the board too, Dave, and I think, my recollection, there were three models. And when we approved these, lofts were not in the equation.
No, there weren't, no, Jim. There were always five or six models.
But I don't think there were any lofts. I think-
No, there was, no, there was, no.
And then later models. The original models didn't have any lofts.
I, I, well, I don't wanna get in the debate with you on it, but the fact that-
Really early on, Jim.
The fact that you have-
In the first phase, there were lofts.
The fact that you have a hundred and eighty-six out of two-
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six tells me they were always there, if you will, maybe not from day one, but maybe-
Certainly quickly thereafter.
I'm on one of the original roads and there are lofts on my street. And it's like the second road that was built out.
But, you know, I think, uh, I think if, if karma heads will prevail, we can figure this out.
Yep.
People ought to be able, I, this is my opinion, to be able to have a loft and use it with the criteria we envisioned. And I, I feel badly for you. You're sort of caught, uh, at the stoplight. And the town is not trying to screw you up. I don't think the association is trying to screw you up. We're trying to figure this out for the betterment of everybody. And I think, I think we can do it. And I, 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 you know, to the board, I don't think we should beat on this safety and blah, blah, blah. Let's just come up with a solution that works and move, and move ahead.
After my loft?
So is that, yeah. Can we like let this one go and then come back in November?
The last thing, the last thing I, the last thing I don't quite understand is how somehow the lofts, and I, I suspect it was the assessor, got appended to the eight hundred square feet. I don't understand why the lofts become additional, uh, living space.
Cause the building inspector interpreted your ruling that said the cottages cannot be extended, expended sideways, upwards or downwards more than eight hundred.
But I think-
And so that's where he got the, I don't have the exact wording, but he, that wording is what caused him a problem.
I think about it.
Lofted units then were compliant with the eight hundred square foot.
They, they were outside of the, that's what we tried to help them understand, is they were never included in the eight hundred.
Right.
But he indicated to me personally that when I look at the ruling, it doesn't say to me that it was or wasn't and I don't wanna get my, in a wringer.
But he never came back to us to ask us what it meant. To me, I, I equate the loft to like a basement. Finished basements, for whatever reason, are not included in a square foot of a-
Correct.
Yeah, I was on the board too, at the same time. And, and to your point, Dave, the loft was not included in the eight hundred square feet cause it was like an attic.
Right.
It was an area for people to be able to store things that they needed to store when they left, you know, for the, or, or when people came over. The most important cons- uh, the most important- The most important cons, uh, the most important point we made is that it was only two bedrooms. That was the most important thing, this board was very concerned about. The loft was never, ever, ever thought about as being a living space or a bedroom space.
So I have the, my permit with me, if you want to see it, the, what, the letter that Henry wrote to decline it, and it was based on the 800 square feet. We don't know the difference, I have no idea what happened before. So we said, okay, well, our, our loft is too big, we're going to just redo our architectural plans, bring in the walls and make it smaller, again, because we're trying to do the right thing yet. And so we resubmitted the plan at 798 square feet, the contractor called Henry and said, listen, like, we're going to bring in the walls, this is what, and he said, still no. And it was because of all this like historical stuff. So we didn't know 800, not 800, how that worked, but, but we, we tried to do whatever it is that, we were like, okay, we're in compliant by having it outside of 800 square feet, we'll bring it in, still, no. But, but then, that's when, that is when we got upset because that's when it started to feel like, well, what do you mean? You said it was declined based on this, and I have the letter saying it's declined based on the 800 square feet. We brought it in and resubmitted it under 800 square feet and it's declined, but now you won't give me a reason. And I said, is there somebody else that will look at this or can get advisement on? I sent a letter to, probably you guys, I'm sure received it. I talked to Jim Morissette for a, a little bit about it, and I said, I just need to understand why, because the only thing that I heard from Henry directly was, it's because I know what goes on in there, I used to be the inspector, I'm now the commissioner, and I'm not going to allow it anymore. And that was the reason and rationale that we got for why the, the loft was declined on the second permit submission.
Okay, so we're not, we're not going to get this settled tonight doing this.
Right, right, that's fine, that's fine.
So I think the, the next course of action is, if we should decide to approve lofts, I think we have a whole set of conditions that I've rattled off, some maybe we can do with me, some, some we can't do, okay? You're going to check with your people, we're going to check with our people. Dave would like to see, um, from the building inspector, um, you know, like laundry list of what has to be in these lofts to make a meat code and, uh, to be submitted for, to be built. And then, um, this will be continued to what date, Joseph?
November 16th.
November 16th, time to be determined. And we, uh, so can I have a motion to?
For you, a motion, sir, can I just make one final statement?
Sure.
So Mr. Earl made a comment about the fact that people knew that grandkids would be stored up there from time to time, maybe with sleeping bags, et cetera. Not criticizing anyone, but the developer knew that, everybody knew that, and, and it's grown over time, and we're not disagreeing. That's why when we came the last time, we said, we can't undo what was done, we can't erase whatever was done, so can we require things like an extra fire extinguisher? Can we have the extra ladder? Can we do things from a practical standpoint going forward to solve that? And we've gone from that to, now we want to do annual inspections and we want to find you. And so that, that's where, to me, we've kind of got a little bit offline from where we were at the last meeting.
Well, backing up a little bit, we got the existing units that we probably know we can't do a whole lot about. The units going forward, those people need to be made aware it's not a bedroom.
Correct.
Plain and simple.
I agree.
Everybody, there was a woman here last month who said, oh, I never got that document.
I understand.
We don't want to hear that.
I understand, that's why we've said, we sent the notice to every single.
We've gone over to try and communicate that.
So that's why I've asked to have these things included with the building permit because someone printed it out, someone signed their name to it, and they can't say, we didn't know that.
And I don't disagree with you on that, sir, going forward. What I'm trying to argue about is the 186 that are there today, to put new restrictions on them and new costs and new fines is where I have my disagreement. I don't have to disagree with anything else you said tonight.
Maybe we can, maybe we can't. That's why I said, you need to check with your people, I'm going to check with my people.
Right, okay.
Maybe a crossroad here that this board was not aware of was when the, when the developers started making finished lofts. We had no barometer to tell us that that was up. So now we're hearing this as, as a result of this, these folks' application.
You didn't.
We didn't know when that, I don't think as a board, we knew when that started. There were lofts, we didn't know they were air conditioned and had a, I mean, what, what is the purpose of a cable hookup in the loft?
The building inspector, the building inspector certainly knew that, right?
Right, the board, the board's now here, we didn't know it.
Right, and that's where I'm saying, I wouldn't want to work with you because it wasn't your fault, but the town of Westford approved these as they were and knew what they were being used for. So without blaming anybody, how do we work through a solution? That's all I'm asking for.
We'll get us, we'll find a solution.
Okay.
David?
This is an aside and it may not pass muster, but I would like to see us provide some relief to these people who have this application hanging. And I would like to see if the board would have the forbearance to let them get on the schedule next month with the appropriate criteria from the building commissioner and see if we can approve what they're trying to do. I, I just, it feels to me like they're getting jammed because of events beyond their control. And I don't, I personally don't feel comfortable with that. And that's just a, a board member speaking.
So is there support for that from the other members of the board?
What's, what's the actual?
Well, I would like to see us take action on their request to put their loft in, subject to the building commissioner's criteria, if we could get that on the agenda next month, see if we can approve that and see, well, we're working to resolve all these issues.
Yep.
It is really no different, we have approved somebody having, adding a half bath, it took us Mark Borowski to sort of beat us over the head to do it, but we did it. But I, I, I think it's, personally, I think it would be the right thing to do.
I don't know how we can, the building inspector's got this, he's.
We just.
He's not approved it. You're saying we override his denial?
No, 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 no.
Make it clear that the 800 feet.
We do it, we.
Doesn't impact the loft.
I, I think. There's more to it than that with the building inspector.
But we have a, we have.
The document says that's the reason.
We have an intelligent building staff and they can work with Henry to figure out the criteria and the process to make it happen. And if the board doesn't want to do that, I understand. But I, it's, it seems to me that's the right thing to do.
I think, you know, I think, I don't know about that suggestion because we're into our, we're into, I mean, these folks are going to have the opportunity, one way or the other, to have this loft done by the opening in April. If we, you know, there's, I don't think there's any urgency to get it done in October.
Stop it, Jim, it isn't, they got, they got caught because of a screw up, I think, of the town.
They've had a deposit with the develop, with the contractor for months and months.
They, they got caught by not reading the rules of the contract when they bought the houses. And real, selling these resale places, they were advertising as three bedrooms, that's where the problem started.
Now, stop it, you don't know that and I don't know that.
Know that, David.
So I think they'll have the, I, I don't know that, I mean, these folks should have their loft in by, what do you open, Patriots Day weekend?
Patriots Day weekend.
They have, I think they'll be fine to get it done then. I don't see any urgency to rush it in the next month, before our next meeting and decision. If we make a decision November 16th, they can get the guy on the books for December, this is November 20th.
Well, they have to wait the 30 day for you.
Oh, yeah, they do.
Technically, but I mean, that's not going to be an appeal.
ZBA variance is 21 days.
Twenty-one, I'm sorry, 21 days.
I don't think there'd be any, I mean, technically, yeah, but I.
I know, but we don't, we don't want to come back to you and say we did something too soon, and we know that there's a, an appeal period, so we've told them they have to wait till the appeal period. But we had told, we'd hoped that you would accept their application if, once it was approved, then the 21 days would start and then they could start their construction on the day 22 in that case.
Absolutely, they should be able to, so I think after, after, if we do this, resolve this in November, then they're good to go.
I think it has to go to the November meeting, Dave, not the October meeting, because I don't think the building inspector can legally make a determination without our determination.
Right.
Am I correct, Joseph?
That would be correct.
Okay, so that's the reason. Not that we wouldn't want to help you guys and, and get it going as fast as we can, but there's, there's a legality here and everything we do, we have to do it so that it's not appealable. And that would be the worst case because if someone appeals that decision, now it puts you back way behind the eight ball, you won't get it done this year at all. Okay? So I think at this point, you know what you want to do? We got our information, um, we'll gather back here in November.
We'll continue to work with staff in the meantime.
And would you tell me that day was, Joe?
November 16th.
November 16th, okay. Have a motion to postpone this November 16th.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, this, I think this belongs to, uh, the, the. No, you got. Ma'am?
You want that back? No, 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 it's okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Excuse me.
I did a bunch of research on lofts and stuff, but it's some pretty good information.
What's that?
I did a lot of research on a lot.
Did you?
Pretty good information.
I was.
All right, so, next order of business is a public hearing for 58 Nutting Road. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Jimmy made the motion, Jay seconded.
So this petition, Mr. Chair, if you want me just to give a brief introduction to it, if you will. So you have both special card and variances to consider. It's for home occupation use over at 58 Nutting Road. It's for a business that's been in there for quite some time, and they're seeking a special permit to continue that use after the fact, and a number of variances from the home occupation criteria. So you have various cards in front of you, the green card shows the home occupation criteria, if you did want to refer to that during the hearing.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Counselor, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrelan Robbins. I'm here tonight as well with Keith and Bianca Rose, they are the owners of the business at 58 Nutting Road, 58 Nutting Road. Joe, do you want to put this in here? This is the existing site conditions right here. This is zoned residential A, the site's 1.18 acres, it's bordered by mostly residential properties and then the big nutting field, actually a buttsus property as well to the rear. The site currently contains a single family home, a brand new swimming pool with lots of hardscape, and two accessory structures and a shed. By way of background, Joe kind of hit on it a little bit, but the Roses have been town residents for 22 years, and they've lived in this home with their four children. They've been operating their business from this home about the same amount of time, about 18 years, without a complaint, okay, until recently. The business has largely remained the same, it has not expanded at all with the exception of some new equipment like a small bobcat and stuff like that, which is all stored on the property. There's very limited work that's actually completed on the premises, it's not a year round business, this is a landscaping company we're talking about. Only routine equipment maintenance is done on property, and when I say routine, Keith is not a mechanic, but he may try to change a tire or sharpen a plow blade or something on property, but everything else goes offsite to an expert. In the winter, they do have, still keep two, about two employees on, but there's no action on site really, if there's a snowstorm, they come and take the truck and plow from their own home, so there's no activity during that time. From April to December, they still keep about two employees and then they may get one or two college kids if they're lucky to also work during that timeframe. They keep three commercial vehicles on site, they keep, try to keep the commercial vehicles, it's hard to tell, but they try to keep the commercial vehicles, the one to the right of the accessory structure, one inside of it, so inside of this commercial structure, and then one to the rear of the property. But largely, they're shielded from full view. I just want to go through quickly what daily operations are like from April to December. So for those two employees or the summer employees that may be there, they get there between 7:45 and 8:00 AM. If they're leaving to mow, they get right in the truck and leave, they have no need for any other equipment. If they're leaving to do landscaping, then they get there, they take the equipment that they need from the shed, everything's stored inside, put it in the truck and they leave. They're generally gone from the site by 8:30-ish in the morning, you know, give or take some time. They return generally in the evening after they complete that job or earlier if the weather is really bad. The only exception to this is if they have a small job, rarely that happens, but they'll do something in the morning, go out for a mow, come back and grab some other equipment and go out for a landscaping job if they have two small jobs in the same day. But that's not the usual. All items are stored out of sight, 100% of them, in each of these shelters, largely the equipment's in the shelter that's in the front, this is the view from the backyard into it. You can see right here, there's a corner of it, these are all in your package, you can see a little bit of the equipment stored in there as well. It's not just commercial equipment stored in there, though, they also keep their personal items. I actually did see today all of their Halloween stuff getting ready to go out, including a grim reaper that is the height of that structure, so there is personal items in there as well. In Commissioner Fontaine's initial opinion letter, he speaks to these structures generally and the variances that may be required, but then he later opined that they've been up so long that they cannot be removed because they've been up there over a decade, so by state law, regardless of how they went up, they get to stay. But regardless of that fact, there's never been a complaint about those structures for over a decade until now. And these types of accessory structures are not unusual in the town of Westford for residential uses, you see them pop up all over the place, I know there's a couple right near my house. However, we are in receipt of, well, we received an anonymous complaint about the property and then we also received an anonymous complaint in writing that came in through public record, and so we're trying to do something about the structure as well. So what we've decided to do is try to do some natural vegetation in front of the structure to screen it from view. This is the street side view, and, and Joe, I don't know if you can go to the street side view, it's like one of the first slides. This is the street side view here, you can see the structure in question is over to the right hand side for lack of a northeast arrow. What we're planning on doing is putting landscaping right in front of that structure and then also down the side of it, so that when you're looking from the neighbor's property, there's one right across the street and there's one that has an angle, it'll be screened from view. These won't be puny little arborvitae, I actually saw a few of them today, he has some planted in their backyard, they're beautiful. There's four of them, they're about 15 feet tall, those will be parked right in front of this structure. There'll also be an additional eight 10-foot arborvitae, and then some lower plantings, three rhododendron, two fall cypresses, and five day lilies just to decorate the area a little bit further. So you can see there, that's what we're proposing to screen the accessory structure from the neighbors and from the site, and really it'll make a nicer streetscape along Nutting Road heading to the field in any case. The other initial complaint to the building commissioner also indicated that there was significant noise coming from the premises and that there were vehicles driving in the front yard. We believe all of this is actually from work being done on the property for the installation of a pool, a large retaining wall in the backyard, and then there's significant hardscape that's been installed around that pool, you can see it now where it says gravel apron. There's also been a waterfall fountain installed in that area as well. And when I say installed, I don't mean that a company came in and installed it, Mr. Rose has been doing this all by himself, so you can imagine this has done an extensive job. It's done after business hours or on weekends when he has time, and sometimes it is noisy. There are things that have been stored on site for this project, it started in COVID and it's just finishing now, stones, rocks, soil, and everything else that's necessary for the construction of something like that. You can't see grating on this plan, but once that retaining wall went in, there's no way to get to the rear of that property, especially with the fence for the pool. So the only way he could access the, that area is to come around with his small equipment is to come around with his small equipment up front of his front yard and then into the pool area. So I imagine a lot of the vehicles that they saw driving there was probably him with his small bobcat moving stones from rear to front. There, I just want to make it 100% clear. There are no stored materials for the contracting business whatsoever on the site. There's no mulch, there's no dirt, there's no stone, nothing for the commercial use whatsoever. Anything that's on-site was used for his own personal use. So I just want to hit the special permit criteria. I know you have it in front of you, but I believe that the special permit for the home occupation can be easily granted. It meets all of the special permit requirements. The first one is the economic needs. I think that there is a serious economic need for small businesses such as this to stay in the town of Westford. It also supports a Westford resident that does lots of local work, including for his abutters and local work for businesses. The second prong is it has little to no impact whatsoever as to traffic in Nutting Road and the surrounding roads. I'd say it's minimal at best. From, coming from a soccer mom that goes to Nutting Field on a few nights a week, I'll tell you, that traffic's a lot worse than anything since it's coming off of this property. It certainly has zero impact to neighborhood character. It's been there for nearly two decades without complaints. I submitted in your packages the abutter signature pages, and I think it's pretty clear that mostly all of the abutters have no issues whatsoever with this use. And I think that largely the abutters are in support of the Roses, and I think you'll hear from a couple of them tonight in support of this application as well. So I would say largely, there's no objection to this application, with one exception. The fifth prong is it has no impact on the natural environment. Obviously, this has no impact on the natural environment. And I think it's very clear that denying the special permit will have a direct fiscal impact on my client as it would close their business, which is this family's sole income, which would clearly be a significant financial impact to the Roses. So I think generally, we meet all of the requirements for a special permit on the site. As to the variances, I want to touch on them. They initially requested four variances. Now, Henry's opinion letter is from July, so it was before he got to see landscaping. It was before he got to see the fact that the structures were going to remain because they are in conformance of mass state law that allows structures to remain after 10 years. So after a discussion with Henry and staff, I think not all of these are going to be required anymore. I think that some of them will be withdrawn. So instead of going through all of the variance requirements for variances I may not ask for your action on, I'm actually going to ask you to table the variance discussion until November. That will give Henry and I enough time to go back through the current status of the property, the current proposal for screening, the structures and their state law protection, and then come up with what variances I actually have to ask this board for relief. Henry hasn't had the time to review all of this, so I would ask for that, once the board actually opens this up for discussion. I also think, and I know I generally don't ask this of this board, but I think this site is ripe for a site visit from this board. I think the board's being asked to say that this fits into a normal residential neighborhood. I was out there myself today and I can say from my opinion that it does. I don't think that those structures detract from the residential use of that property whatsoever. And I think that anything else that this board has issue with as to parking or other equipment that's stored on-site could easily be dealt with, especially from a visual standpoint from Nutting Road. So the other ask I'm going to have for this board, since we may have a little bit of time between now and November, is just to schedule a site visit and let's get out there and take a look at the site and the uses that exist out there. And also, you can see what significant hardscapes he's put on for his own personal use. You can see how much work has actually been done out there for that. So saying that and tabling the variance discussion for now because I think that it's probably a better use of the board's time for me to wait to do those to hear what Mr. Mr. Fontaine thinks I need to proceed with. I'd love to hear the board's comments and the public comments and can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. I guess this question can go right to the applicant. When you mow, where do you dump your grass?
Uh, Dr. Moll.
Okay. So I noticed, because I've already been down there, looked at this.
I have too.
And I, and I, and I feel bad that they dumped the soccer field in your backyard because I'm sure that's not a pleasant, pleasant environment on a Saturday afternoon.
Or Sunday morning.
Well, Sunday, yeah. Pretty much any day of the week now. But I noticed in the, in the, in the back corner, when you drive down the road to get into the fields, there's a mound of stuff there. What is that all about?
Well, that was actually the, the Roses asked for screening from the town of Westford when they were putting in the field. And they were told that there was no money whatsoever for a screening to the rear. It goes right into their backyard. I think the town did end up, and it shows up on this plan a little bit, put up eight panels, where's my north arrow, to the, to the south here. So to, you can see them kind of hanging off. So that's what they put up for screening. We had some children that liked to wander right into the Roses' backyard because it's very open. So they had put some additional panels coming down to almost where the West symbol is, the 23707, all the way to the west, behind that area, behind the temporary shelter, because that's where his other small equipment is stored, is behind that temporary shelter. So the kids didn't have direct access. And the rest of that is just pushed up berm and other debris up into that corner. So it made a natural separation between the field and this property.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you said you, you store three vehicles on the premises?
Yes.
Are they lettered?
Yes.
And you have one bobcat?
One bobcat and one other small.
Escavator.
Mini X?
Yes.
How many trailers?
Three.
Okay.
All for the bobcat or one for the landscaping, like the lawn mowers and stuff?
Two for the bobcat excavator and then one for the mowers.
Okay.
And if you go, if you actually look out on-site, you can't see any of those. They're all stored behind where it says shed, there's a temporary shelter. And basically, everything else is behind there. It's 100% screened from view at this point. And those, where it says vinyl fence, those large arborvitae's we're proposing to move actually are right there. So that you can't see any of that whatsoever from the back. The only thing that's stored over to the right-hand side, where it says stone wall in this plan right now, are some plows. And that was just for access to the pool area. So those plows also will be going back to the rear area, not along the right side of the property there, as you see it today. Everything will be 100% shielded from view.
So the screening, is that going to cover the whole length of that tent?
It'll cover the entire length of that tent. You can see they shaded in the tent behind it. So you can see this is the tent here. These are the very tall arborvitae's that are already on-site that they're going to move. And this is the new arborvitae that'll go down the side. So then it covers the front and the side of the structure. And then they're also proposing some low growth right there, too, to cover the bottom of the arborvitae's that aren't always as thick. It seems to be that's the one, the issue, the, the accessory structure that's an issue visually. If you've been out on-site, you've noticed that the other structure, accessory structure, is actually behind that white vinyl fence that's tucked up in the rear. So it's very hard to see, especially while you're traveling along Nutting Road.
Any other questions from the board, comments?
The whole concept of home occupation, you know? I mean, we've done, people baking cakes in their kitchen and dog biscuits in their kitchen and... This doesn't just fit the parameters we've, I don't think, as a board have done as a home occupation.
Well, this is a little.
I mean, we've denied a couple of these.
Right.
I think we denied one on Melissa Drive for storage of a couple of trucks. We denied one on Kyle Thompson, when this was a similar application. I mean, it clearly says, "There should be no change in outside appearance of the building premises, no visible evidence of conduct of such home occupation."
Right.
There's certainly visible evidence of a home occupation.
But I think we can screen that. And I think that the distinction here is, though, that we're not storing other materials on-site. Really, the, the intents of these accessory structures, which can be up there for residential use, they're everywhere in town.
Yeah, but these were put up without permit.
Right, but I mean, despite that, even if they got a permit, they could put whatever they would like in them. This type of structure doesn't make the property commercial, is my only point. This, these are 100% allowed for residential accessory uses and they're used throughout town. And I think if we put up screening, you wouldn't be able to see any of the uses in the rear. The other thing that's different here is that they're not actually doing anything on-site. They don't, they're not putting, taking the bobcat and putting mulch in the truck and then taking the truck and leaving the premises. None of that is done here whatsoever. Really, it's just the parking of the vehicles and leaving in the morning and then coming back at night. So I think that's a distinction from the other ones, where it was more like a contractor yard. This is just like a home base to leave from in the morning. This is a landscaping company.
We had another one that was, just wanted to put a couple more trucks because he had properties that he was maintaining. There was nothing, there was nothing else.
Well, the other interesting thing, and the thing I want to work through with Henry, is there's a conflict in the zoning bylaws between home occupation and regular accessory uses that are allowed in a residential property. And I don't want to go directly into them with the board tonight, but your accessory use bylaw, or your home occupation bylaw says you can have one commercial vehicle. But by right, in a residential zone, I can have one commercial vehicle plus two more that are screened from view. So there's a direct conflict there between the number of vehicles I can have. And I, I don't know how to address that yet and I definitely want to run through that with the building commissioner and give him some time to tell me which one is proper and how that can be addressed or what his opinion is. But just something to bring to your attention, that it's a direct conflict between the two bylaws. It doesn't make any sense.
Why don't you bring us some easy ones?
I know. I think if we have a little bit more time, I think that a lot of these variants will go by the wayside and the questions will be the special permit. And I think there's plenty that we can do on-site to appease the board as to the view shed or making sure that it keeps its neighborhood appearance. And I think that the other issues that this board generally has with yards like this is going to be heard from the abutters that don't generally, that generally do have a concern with these types of uses, don't have it here. So I think that that will be something different than you've heard before for these types of uses.
I think part of it is the appearance.
Right.
That, you know, if there was a nice garage there with flatboards and roof and this black Quonset hut, what, 20 feet off the road? I mean, that visually, despite the activity, I think that's conceptually part of what people, you know, looking at, saying, well, this, this detracts from the neighborhood. You get, you get a beautiful pool, you got a nice walk in front, you screened it, you did a, a nice job putting that, you know, it's almost like two pieces of property. One is better homes of God and the other is, you know, industrial, industrial. And you might as well put a lion down the middle. If you had a different type of building, that might have been one thing, a fence. You know, the arborvitae's, yeah, but, you know, enclose it totally with a substantial fence on, through the front, I mean...
And we'd be happy to discuss any of those. I mean, we were trying to screen the issue that had been raised to us so far, which is the structure. But if there has to be more significant landscaping, we're happy to discuss that as well.
Any other comments from the board before I open it up? No, Jay?
Well, I just, was, one of the structures not meet the front yard setback? Or is that, I noticed I...
They were put up without building permits. So in itself, they would be illegal. But since they've been up for over 10 years, they are, they get to stay.
I know Henry said they were non.
Yes.
They were legal, non-conforming.
That's why.
Lots, but.
Because they've been there that long.
Question came, I don't know why it came up, but.
I don't know how that happens, when somebody puts a building that close to the road.
Didn't they realize they're in a residential neighborhood before they started this process?
Say that again, Paul.
Didn't they realize, again, this is where we get in trouble. It's a residential neighborhood to start off with and then they start doing things on the sly or, you know, without thinking about it. And all of a sudden, we get into this situation. And that's happened before. It's, it's, people do self-interpretation of what they can do with their property.
It's a little confounding that this was put up that close to the road, requiring a building permit and it never was addressed.
Well, it's the, I don't think it's the front yard setback issue. It's the fact that it didn't.
I mean, no permit.
Oh, no permit, yeah. I mean, that's what happens. That's why the state law is there. If you, you can, you can't go after a structure that's been erected with a building permit after six years and without a building permit after 10 years. It's to protect structures that don't have really any impact after a certain amount of time.
I just don't know how that made it under the radar.
Maybe the question is, are the structures, I mean, look like they can be moved, right? I mean, it's like, they almost look like they're temporary structures, right?
Well, that's my, was another one of my questions. Is that a permanent or a temporary structure?
The green one's temporary.
What?
The green one is a temporary structure.
They're considered temporary structures because they can be moved by.
It's a gray area.
People, but I mean, the, by Westford, by Westford regulations, they're considered a structure that must comply with everything. Just a little nuance there, but yeah, these are movable structures.
Well, that's, that's movable.
Movable.
Yeah, so I mean, somebody put that in their driveway. I don't think they'd have to come to us, right, for a, or they wouldn't have to go to the building department for a permit, right?
That requires a permit.
It's over the size, so this constitutes a structure that must get a permit and comply with setbacks.
A one-car garage.
This is, this is a, that's the nuance here. Even though it's movable because it's over a certain size, it has to go, go through the building department.
Okay, I see a lot of people in the audience. Is there someone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this? So we had an anonymous letter, Mr. Anonymous is not here. So let's start the parade of people who would like to speak in favor of this. Please come up to the microphone, give us your name.
My rule in my classroom, I always go first. My name's Robert Jones. I live at 56 Nutting Road, as you've seen there from, we're right next door. I live there with my wife Elizabeth Cole and her mother, Barbara Cole. The Roses' operation has never interfered with our lives whatsoever. I work days, my wife, wife works nights. Nobody's losing any sleep.
Hello?
Sir?
Keep going.
Can you speak a little louder?
Sure.
Out for the TV and everything.
I can project a little more. Yeah, they, their, their operations has never interfered with us. I think they've done nothing but contribute to the neighborhood. Just on a personal note, doesn't, doesn't affect your decision. If I were picking neighbors, that's who I would pick. And I hope you can work with them so they can continue their business there in that location.
So you're the director butter?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Someone else?
Good evening. My name is Amy Cassidy and I live at 59 Nutting Road. I like to go second as an educator so I can beat my competition.
Hold up the microphone so we can hear you.
Sure, and I can project as well.
Use your outdoor voice, not your indoor voice.
I worked in Westford as an educator for over 18 years. I came to Westford and I moved here for 12 years ago. I was immediately drawn to the Roses. They have a lovely family. Our children are the same ages. I guarantee you, I noticed not one thing that was out of place in his home that deterred me as a homeowner. I know that there were some discussions about bringing home property values down. I guarantee you that I paid top dollar for my home and their property had zero impact on any... I had no hesitations in buying in that neighborhood. There has been no interference in our lives at all. I've worked school hours over at Abbott, noticed nothing. I was an educator during COVID, there 24/7. I noticed nothing. I took a year off because of COVID. I noticed nothing. It's seamless there. The plans that they have for that arborvitae's, he, Keith is a genius with any art medium. And I guarantee you, it will look stunning. The arborvitae's that he already has there, I don't know what kind of green thumb you have, but they go to the heavens and it would be stunning. And it would actually be this, that structure could actually be the showcase in our neighborhood. I mean, I, I speak no lie. If you saw the other side of his home and he already has this greenery that he has grown, it would be stunning. Whatever complaints were made about any machinery is that during COVID, we all had to find ways to connect as a family. They have four children. Their house is their temple and they work tires, tirelessly after hours to bring this oasis to their home. And they invite everybody to the neighborhood there. It's just the community gathering place and to hear that it's a distraction in any way, shape, or form and to have that mark, it's just not how our community views this. And I just thought you should know that.
You live across the street?
I have the bird's eye view. I actually should be here and you talking to me about keeping my lawn in better shape. But we're busy. We live right above, so I can see right down on everything, straight to the backyard, to the left, to the right, everything. I have a bird's eye view. I know there was some discussion about, is it a berm? A berm. I would witness from my home, people coming into his backyard. Kids using their structures. He has a lot of great things out there that were tempting. Lots of calls like, hey, there's people in your backyard, just want you to know. There's also a significant amount of late-night use in the parking lot by the, the fields to which the beams, and even the cops taking patrol there, the beams would go through my home and it would be so distracting. And when that berm came up, that problem was solved for me. And I know we had gone to the town about having some type of barrier and when that didn't happen and we had a resource in tech, in our neighborhood that was able to solve that problem for us and without an added cost to us living there, it was a godsend. I mean, it really changed our experience with the nutting field because that is, that is what changed the tone of our neighborhood and we understand that. I mean, we all moved in before that happened, but we understand what a value that is to our community, too, and the noise that it comes with it. But this is, you would not notice it if you lived there on the daily. and the noise that it comes with it, but this is, you would not notice it if you lived there on the daily.
Thank you.
Thank you. This picture here, her house is actually behind here up on the.
That's her mailbox, I think.
Yeah, so it's right, it's behind, right behind, so that's the view shed, that's her view shed.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of this?
Scott Hazelton, 76 Nutting Road, so I'm down the road about four houses. But probably one of the few families who've been here longer than the Roses on that street. Yeah, when that field was built, as you mentioned Scott, it's not the most friendly thing for the people who live right next to it. Every house, I believe, from the Roses down to De Depot changed hands when that field went in, except for the Roses. So anybody who bought a house knew that business was there when they bought the house. So it's not, I don't think it surprised anybody that it has popped up. Yeah, they're, they're great neighbors. I mean, you know, but my boys little son popcorn, they always bought the popcorn. And then, of course, other kids are gone from one to four and great gained in height. I drive by that place every morning, every night, walk past it some days and some nights and it's, it's always quiet. There's more noise from the field. So that's not a problem with the field, it's, it's kids being happy, but there's more noise in that field than there ever is from Keith's business. So I plead support of them.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Lashine. I live at 58, 57 Nutting, next door to the, across the street. And I'm here in support of the Roses and just wanted to reiterate what the attorney said, that, you know, that there isn't any impact on my life for them and I hardly even noticed that there's a business there. I'm also have a home occupation, I'm a carpenter and I would like to see, you know, that the town would support people that, you know, are here working in Westford and raising their families here and, you know, I've been on Nutting Road for 25 years and been in Westford for 60 years and would like to stay here, like to see Westford continue as it's going. So I hope the board votes in, in favor.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Jones's wife, Elizabeth Cole. We live next door directly. I, I do work nights, I'm a nurse, so I am there pretty much all day, whether I work or not, I'm home. I come home in the morning, the most I see is the trucks pulling out, going on their way, the guys going on their way. I never hear anything from them, but if I wanted to make a formal complaint about anything, it would be the field noise and the lacrosse balls that are in my backyard, the kids that are coming into my backyard to retrieve lacrosse balls, soccer balls. I don't, I'm not complaining. I think the field is great for the town. I'm just saying there are a lot more things that I find difficult to deal with in the neighborhood. They are not it at all. They, he's actually, Scott, Keith has actually greatly improved our yard. He's done all our work that we've had done. I've never had an issue dealing with them. I've never had them have any kind of problems. I've never had, as a matter of fact, I think he's gotten some business from, from the great job he's done in, in our yard. Cause people see it and say, you know, we want that too. And even with him doing yard, in, doing work in my yard, I've slept through that, you know, and if you've ever worked nights, I will tell you that sleep is a great value. And again, if I was gonna complain about anything, it's the field. I think it's horrendous that there's nothing there to keep kids and balls from coming into my yard cause I'm waiting for the lawsuit when one of them walks through the woods and breaks their ankle and they're gonna be on my property illegally, but they will sue me. So those are other concerns I have, but I've never had an issue with any noise coming from them. I think their kids come to my yard just like it's their own yard. And when we have family gatherings, those kids, members of my family go to the yard just like it's all one big yard. It's, there is no impact, no bad impact to that community at all. And it would be, I think, a really terrible thing to not support them in their business. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is David Cassidy. I live at 59 Nutting, Nutting Road, right across the street up on the hill. I'm in support of, just it doesn't really impact us at all, like, I don't, don't, as hard as noise. I usually start, you know, I leave my house 4:30, 5:00 in the morning, but I'm home at like 2:30, 3 o'clock every day and I don't hear anything. Like no equipment, trucks, nothing like that is, you know, nothing really that is bothersome or kinda abnormal.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I love my cat, that's all I have.
That's okay.
I just wanted to say, I am a neighbor, an old neighbor, and I'm near 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And they have Melah, Ella, a lot of them. I can purify my family, I can dispose of my daughters. So I'm very appreciative of what they do. They don't make noise, they just pure good neighbors.
Can we have your name for the record, please?
Barbara Cole.
Thank you.
I'm 97.
You look good.
Just to Mr. McMillan's point, I know this is a request after the fact, but I think that actually helps the Roses in this case because they have run just such an exemplary operation over there that people don't even know that they're operating. And I think that that goes to Mr. Kaziniac's point of it blending into a neighborhood. I think this perfectly blends into a neighborhood. I don't think that the property itself is being used as a business. I think that they just leave there in the morning and come back at night. That's the distinction here. So I think that with the special permit criteria, I don't even have to make the pitch because I think that the neighbors do it for me. I think that the only wild cards here still open are the variances and how to proceed with those variances. Just, we need some clarification from the building commissioner. And for any of those members that haven't been out to site, I really do think that it's worth your time to go out there. But we are happy to discuss with the board, putting additional landscaping up there if there's items of view once you get out there that you think should be further shielded from sight.
Hey, does the board have any more questions or comments?
Moving the major structure there on the street, is that a possibility?
We could move it, we could move it further to the rear.
Exactly.
Of the property, the property line, but you would still, I mean, we'd still have to shield it, you'd still see it. So I don't know how much moving it back would, would help your, your issue. But if you come out to site and you feel like moving it back or having a different location or more shielding could be beneficial, we're happy to discuss it with you.
Would fencing be an option or arborvitae versus fence?
Well, the arborvitae is much larger, so that's the benefit here. The other neighbors are up on a hill. So the fence is gonna stop at a certain portion and the arborvitae are gonna go much higher. These are 15 feet tall, these ones that are going in, so they're gonna give much more screening. That was my first question as well. Can we put in a fence?
And we've also had some in situations, and I'm sure this probably isn't one of them based on his occupation, that it's in perpetuity and we've had a lot of dead ones that look like hell after five years.
Right.
And we go back to, oh, if fence would have been still alive, the arborvitae are all dead.
Right.
So that's why my question.
We could do a mix as well, but given his profession, I think would probably be very bad advertising for those trees to die. But yes, I agree with you, it could be a mix of both.
Okay, so I think what'll happen is, for those of you who haven't driven by, should drive by, look at it. And we wanna continue this till November 16th, correct?
Yes, please.
So if there's no further questions or comments from the board, then.
You expect to get together with Henry and perhaps have some different, different requests?
Yes.
Is that what?
Yes, I believe, so two of the variances are actually directly aimed at the structures. And the structures clearly already exist and are not going to, going to be removed, but they could be moved, which would also change the nature of the request. So those may go by the wayside. The parking one is the other issue because there's a direct conflict between those two sections. So that one may also go by the wayside. And then the, really the only one that's left on the plate then is the one about parking and creating parking area for people that are there. So that would be the fourth one that may still be on the table. So those, that's why I don't wanna waste a board's time going through the variance criteria for three variances that may very well be gone once Henry sees the updated information.
That's one of the reasons why I wouldn't wanna see that structure moved, because you could put the parking behind it, which will keep it away from the street.
You'd like to see the part, that structure moved?
No.
Oh, okay.
I don't wanna see it moved because that allows the area in the back to be utilized and put things out of sight even more.
I think it might still be enough room, you know, we'll back and still do that. And is there any, in, well, long-term, any intent on pavement, paving, any of that area, you know, the going in for?
No, but if the, even where the parking is, it's not paved right now. You can see right, kinda where the pointer is, that pickup truck, that's parked behind there.
Yes.
We're going to propose to put.
The other day, right behind, to the side of that building, on the other, on the right-hand side, there's a truck and a trailer that pulled in there last night.
That's right. So that's where, where you can see the truck kinda peeking out?
Yeah, right there, yep, on the right.
That one in the back, that's where that truck is generally parked. And then if you see on the other side of that storage facility towards the street side, you can actually see the front of that other truck peeking out. That is generally where the truck parks with the long trailer, cause they're generally screened from view. This is the only angle, you can see that car from the rear. So that's why we were considering putting all the parking in the back there behind the facility. But we can see if we move that accessory structure back more, if we still have enough space for parking. Yeah, and the landscaping in the front.
More landscaping.
Landscaping is what's gonna catch your eye, not a truck in the back.
Right. Yeah, and then these are very large arborvitae. If you actually walk down their driveway and look to the left-hand side, for those of you who haven't been there, towards the back of the fenced-in area back here, you'll see the larger arborvitae are already made to back there.
Yeah, yeah.
Not to the pool, to the, they're actually in the shed way in the rear. They're just parked like in the middle of the yard here, you'll see.
Some others on the pool side too, right?
Yeah, those are much smaller.
Smaller, yeah.
Five footers. These are, you know, 15 foot arborvitae.
Yeah. So they would be that size. We would be proposing, I know you can't even see, didn't catch him on any of them somehow.
Catch Thompson.
All of those are very reasonable options for us to make sure that it's further screened from view, especially from the streetscape for driver buys or people that aren't neighbors, yeah.
Like that picture's perfect, cause anything behind that structure, you can't see from the road.
Right.
Cause you can't see the road from there.
That's right.
So that's why I wouldn't push the shelter back anymore.
Well, I think if you go, there's a different angle, that's a different angle from, can't from the road if you straight on, this is from the left-hand view.
I think the applicant, the applicant's offer for a site visit would be helpful. We could arrange one or two times between now and November. That is helpful for the board to go out.
So the other thing that I want you to think about too is if we condition this so that the equipment fleet doesn't grow. So in other words, it's gonna be three trucks, three trailers, a bobcat and an excavator.
Got it.
Not a chipper and a crane and all these other things. It's just those, that's the equipment. And I hate to say, I hate to do this because if you have an opportunity to expand and grow, I, I don't need a guy that stops it, but we have to put a, put a, you know, a pin in it and say, this is as much as you can have there.
Understood.
Okay. So I guess we need that motion for continuance till November 16th.
Move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in November.
Okay. So let's see, what's left here? General business.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I will say that you'll be beyond your timeframe, so up record, I give the board all necessary extensions for the variances and special permits and I'll get it written right into staff tomorrow.
That's above our pay grade. We have to deal with that stuff. So I guess the only thing that we have is the, the, the mandatory bylaws. Accessory dwelling bylaws and Joe, can you give us a rundown of how Monday night's meeting went with our planning board?
Sure, so they opened up the public hearing, they continued it to October 3rd, just to give people multiple chances of coming. They did advise us to draft a written report that'll be available for a town meeting on October 17th. Generally, they had one suggestion and that was in section 3.3.4. This was the item on parking, it's getting shifted from within the bylaw, that's why it's in green in your packet. But where it says sufficient appropriate space for at least one additional parking space shall be provided by the owner. They wanted to strike the word additional and the reason for that being, if you have a driveway that could accommodate four cars already, they thought it wouldn't make sense to require someone to add an additional parking space to their driveway when you already have, you know, three spaces on site, that would be two for the primary dwelling and one for the accessory. So they, they suggested taking out the word additional there. And otherwise, that was, that was it. Nobody spoke during the, the hearing, but they did continue it to give, you know, another opportunity for anybody to come and speak on it.
Okay.
So if there's any, anything this board has any questions on, we'll try to go through that. Otherwise, it would be helpful just to get a vote to recommend approval at special town meeting.
This board to make that recommendation?
Make the recommendation, yes, since you're co-sponsoring it, yeah, so just so we have, we have a vote to recommend approval.
So we have a motion to recommend this at special town meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
You got it.
Thank you.
Anything else that anybody has? Are you all set, Joe?
All set. Do you want me to work with Joe?
Scott? Hang on, Paul, one minute. Yes, yes.
Bought the loft?
Yeah, Dan's done some homework on lofts and he has some information that may be helpful.
Interesting stuff.
Interesting, okay, so it's interesting.
Should we, oh, anything we need to benefit from now or is it?
First of all, loft isn't even defined in the International Building Code. So when you go to other areas, a loft is a space, unfinished space above a room but below the attic. And a couple different areas, definitions, it was clear that it was unfinished. And I did find one definition where it's not included in the square footage of the building because it's an unfinished storage space, which they kinda really hammered in.
I saw that, I looked at it and I saw that somewhere, but it was in a particular state. I forget which state it was. It was, was it varied from state to state?
It could be. Attorneys from state to state could, you know, but there's nothing in the International Building Code. The ICC code doesn't even define loft. So, but another definition said the loft's gotta have one wall, complete wall, open to the space below. Which falls, like you were saying Scott about having a railing, okay? So it doesn't sound like you can have a doorway, like a 32-inch doorway with four walls into a wa- loft. From what I can gather and talk about, the building commissioners, they attribute it, you gotta have like an open railing. So like, say it's a 12-foot wide space and eight feet deep, that 12-foot, that overlooks the rest of the unit, that's gotta be open with a railing, you know, to, the railing which would meet code. So there were some interesting things. You may wanna think about putting, if you're gonna consider allowing the loft, limit the square footage. You know, if, if it's not gonna be counted into the square footage of the unit, the 800 square feet, someone could say, well, I'm gonna put a 600-foot, square foot loft up there. So there's some things to.
Yeah, I wanted to send Joe a list of, make some notes and send it to him and then maybe they can email it to all of us so that we can kinda peruse him and see what's going on. All right, Paul, what's going on?
I have a question. When I came home from Italy, I had two messages on my phone, one anonymous, one wasn't. Then I came home from Birmingham, had another anonymous, and then I've had several people ask me, what's going on with the property on North Main Street? Does anyone know? Staff know?
I'm assuming 12 North Main.
12 North Main, yeah.
So there's some cleanup work going on right now. The town received a grant.
No, no, not 12 Main, the, where the fire was.
Oh, oh, oh.
By Haley's. By Haley's with the big fire was.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything.
Well, here's what they've said, the messages. They said, we have a place on Bridge Street that burned 15 years ago, still standing. They have a junkyard over on Patton Road that's collapsing. They have a old Reeves Garage in Forgeville and Center that's collapsed. And then you got this place on North Main Street. And they're all asking, what happens to the 30-day demolition of places that burn or, or construction or anything like that has to be taken down? Why aren't they being addressed? And I said, I have no, I, I tell them to call the town hall, but.
Those are four good points of consideration.
Yeah.
All four properties are good, good examples, Paul, of what you're talking about. The most recent one, that fire, but.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
The most recent one's the fire, but the others you mentioned have been around for a long time. It's a good point. It's a good point.
But none of them are under the preview of the CVA.
Right.
No.
But just a general question.
That, they're all saying that, that we know that they made other people that burned or some, take them down within 30 days. I think the big one they all referred to is E. Oplus Place up in Westford Center there where the maga basket is now.
Yeah.
I mean, that, they were forced to take it down, and then they said, people who have construction are forced to take it out in 30 days and stuff like that. I said, look, I don't know the answer. Call Town Hall, but I'm just saying, people are asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
So-
Did you notice Reeves Garage?
Yes, I did. Yes, very much so. That's paved there.
Here's the problem, and this, it was a good point. If a kid or someone else gets hurt in one of those, the town could be liable for not enforcing a bylaw of taking that type, correcting that type of situation.
Yeah.
Not just the property owner. They could, they could go after the town.
And the one by Sargent's has been there for probably over a decade.
Oh, that's no excuse. I mean, what, what, why is the reason it didn't come down?
Because Mr. Frank, are we on the issue?
Mr. What?
Yeah.
The property owner had convinced the prior commissioner that he was in the process of rehabbing that.
15 years ago?
I'm just telling you what happened, Paul.
I understand, but that's a lot of bullshit. You know it.
Well, how about the Patton Road, that whole Patton Road thing, I mean?
Oh, that's the old works property. I mean, if somebody doesn't get killed there, it'll be, it'll be-
That's quite, I don't know what the deal is with that. It's quite a piece of property.
All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.